I introduce the panelists for the next session. It's the Young Innovators Special Session. And firstly, if the Chair and the officials on the panel, and I'll just do a little bit of an explanation that Her Excellency, Dr. Ria Al-Busadi, the Minister of Higher Education, referred to us maybe nine months ago how it is important to have this as part of the MENA Innovation Forum, where as a segue from this Critical Thinking Panel that we have, what young innovators are actually doing, what young people are doing to potentially have built SMEs, build their companies with new ideas. They don't have to necessarily be new inventions, but at least innovations for the marketplace. So this is a bit experimental, so bear with us. We hope the next hour and a half is going to go well. What we're going to do is we're going to have some opening comments. We're going to have a panel session for about 20 minutes from institutional experts on developing the next generation of innovative entrepreneurs. And then we're going to have 10 young innovators. We'll have two batches of five. We'll call them up one by one. Each young innovator is five from Oman and five from the region, and they will make a five-minute presentation on what problem they solve, what their idea is. Those five will sit at the table at the end and will answer some questions from you in the audience. And then we'll have the next batch of five will do the same, another five five-minute presentations. And then you can ask more questions of them, how they got into their business and so on. The panel may make some comments. And then at the end, we're going to have a vote. It's a bit of entertainment. It's not entirely a meritocracy, but that said, we live in a competitive world, and if you want to be in business, you do have to appreciate competition. So you'll be able to vote for your favorite three at the end of it. You'll see the sheets on your chairs is a summary of all of the 10 young innovators. And use your devices, your own mobile phones or tablets. We'll show you a website address. It'll be slido.com. You just enter the code and you can choose your favorite three. We'll get to that bit at the end. But let's start by introducing the Chair of the Panel, which is Abdullah Al-Rashdi, my apologies, Digitalization Chief Architect of the PDU, the Petroleum Development Organization. Abdullah, please come to the stage. And then we have Dr. Hassan Al-Durham, who's the President of Qatar University. I saw you a second ago. Yes, sir, please come to the stage. And then we have His Excellency Professor Hassan Diab, who's the Vice President of American University at Beirut, Lebanon, former Minister of Education, Lebanon. Professor Mohammed Abini, the Vice President, Jordan University of Science and Technology. And Dr. Ahmed Al-Ghassani, the CEO of Riada in Oman, which is about incubating young companies here in Oman. So I'm going to hand over to you, Abdullah Al-Rashdi, to make some opening comments, spend the next 20 minutes or so. And then Abdullah Al-Rashdi, you will call the young innovators one by one, and Inshallah it'll all go smoothly. Okay, over to you, Abdullah.
All right, thank you, John, for the introduction. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm honored today to chair this Young Innovator Session with such distinguished guests and creative minds from our young innovators. Let me start by stating that any economy is actually dependent on its growth by access to resources. While natural resources are depleted over time, intellectual ones are not. Human creativity is the only inexhaustible resource that exists today. And when such creativity is converted into action, it becomes innovation. And when innovation is fostered and grown as a business, it is then what we call entrepreneurship. Now, in a recent study done by Forbes, 50% of jobs created across the globe are either as a result of entrepreneurial activities or as a result of small and medium enterprises. And this is basically a huge percentage. And we need to prepare our education system for such a thing, for entrepreneurship. With the Fourth Industrial Revolution also coming its ways, we have technologies such as robotics, advanced analytics, artificial intelligence. All of these are disrupting the way we live, we play, we work, and we learn. Now, the issue is it has a positive impact and it has a negative impact. In 2018, McKinsey launched a report called "The Future of Jobs in Middle East." And what they stated is that among the Gulf countries only, we are going to lose 40% of jobs to automation and to the Fourth Industrial Revolution. As Professor Yusra mentioned previously about EJAD, in BDU, actually, we started an initiative, a study, with EJAD, which is a platform where academia, industry, and the Research Council are contributing towards that. And we launched a study about the impact of the Fourth Industrial Revolution on jobs, especially in the oil and gas. And we hope that will stimulate others to follow pursuit. Oman is also doing a lot of work around innovation. In the recent 2018 Global Innovation Index, Oman was ranked number six among Arab countries in innovation. And in the 2040 Vision, we are hoping that, or we aspiring to be one of the top 10 most innovative hubs worldwide. Now, with that stated, we need to establish collaboration among institutions. We need to make sure that education is key towards the success of this aspiration. Now, in my opinion, what needs to happen is that you have creativity, you have innovation, you have entrepreneurship. We need to make sure that all of these elements are fostered in our education system. Because only then, when all of these elements are fostered, we can reach such aspiration. Let me now, ladies and gentlemen, to our panelists, and we'll start with you, Professor Hassan Diab. And I have actually an interesting question for you about the education and how to make the student as a center of such education. How do we prepare actually our education system to foster innovation? And what sort of things we need to teach the student at this stage in order for us to prepare them for what's coming in the future?
Thank you, Abdullah. Well, before I start, I have to thank Arab Brains and the Ministry of Higher Education for organizing this, in my opinion, very successful event. I've known the Ministry for a long time, Her Excellency and the Director General, for over 15 years when I was back then President of Zofar University back in Salala. And the Ministry has done amazing work over the past decades. I've been following up on them. Just one very quick decision, example of a decision that they've made to ensure quality is in place is the fact that they have requested any newly established university to partner with a leading university. And that made all the difference. Well, in answer to your question, I think obviously many talked about student-centered learning as opposed to teacher-centered learning. This is definitely essential to make sure that you address the needs of all students. Students, you know, learn at different pace, in different ways. And much has been said about the use of technology in that area to facilitate the learning process. I mean, it was mentioned again that there's a lot of teaching, and in many cases excellent teaching, but there's very little learning that's taking place. So this has to change. I mean, there are big strides that have over, I mean, I've been in higher education for over three decades, and I've seen big strides in higher education in the MENA region, but there's still much to be desired. So specifically in answer to your question, what I used to do when I used to teach for almost two decades as a professor of computer engineering, I used to integrate a lot of hands-on students. And all of that is group work, teamwork. So they have to work together. They have to do research together. They have to do projects together, practical assignments, all sorts of tasks, which is basically representing the majority of the grade so that they take it seriously in order to... I've also introduced when I was Chair of the Electrical and Computer Engineering Department at the American University of Beirut back in 98, which is the biggest department at AUB in terms of number of students, an external advisory vote to engage, you know, CEOs of relevant companies to the specializations that are offered within the department so that we build bridges, not just in terms of facilitating projects in industry, that's not enough, in terms of facilitating interaction between, you know, the experts in industry and... So there are many facets to the, you know, question that you mentioned, but very briefly, I think what we're doing in higher education now is creating research centers that are very focused. And I think what we should do is change this paradigm so that we create multidisciplinary research centers. That's where, you know, groups from different disciplines with innovative ideas work best. And this is what we're trying to do at the American University of Beirut. We've recently launched the I-Park or the Innovation Park to allow ideas of students in terms of final year projects, master's thesis, PhD thesis to turn into startups. But more so than not, this involves groups of students from different disciplines to solve a specific problem. And obviously, as was mentioned, you have to give them the lead. You have to trust them. You have to facilitate. I mean, why do they succeed outside more so than in the MENA region? Very simply, the ecosystem is there outside. I mean, they're the same students. They excel, I know, in engineering, in electrical engineering. Some of the top engineers in the States are Lebanese. Why don't they excel as much in Lebanon what they do outside? So we really have to provide them all the elements of success, the ecosystem, the connectivity to the industrial world, which is not as engaging as somebody mentioned that, well, 90% of research budget that is attracted by universities in the States is from industry. And it's the opposite in our region. It's more like 10 or less percent. So there are many factors to that, but basically making the student as the pivot of all of this and making sure that all the elements in the ecosystem are facilitated for him and her to succeed in their innovative ideas.
Thank you, thank you, Professor. I will turn to Professor Mohammed. 40% actually of the jobs that are coming in the future are not yet known, okay? And how do you prepare for something like this? There is a massive digitalization. There is the Fourth Industrial Revolution. There are many of these trends that are coming to the education sector. So how do we prepare for this? And how to make sure that we build entrepreneurship within our education ecosystem to make it a success?
Well, I have to say first that in Jordan, we have been really working in this issue since some times. And now with the change, the fast change of technology, we think that we need really not, I would have said that we are advanced, but now if anyone thinks that he is ahead, he has really to stop and say, well, we are going to the digital world in some times, and even currency will not be needed. There are things that we cannot imagine. It's just like science fiction. So what we have done, we started a program of bridging the gap between teaching and what the market needs. But then we discovered that, as you said, things are changing very fast. So we started teaching students, you know, things like big data, you know, artificial intelligence. And with the Center of Innovation that has been here, we have the Center of Nanotechnology, Center of Innovation and Entrepreneurship. And, you know, we are now having, we are encouraging the entrepreneurs or at least idea production to come to this center. And in Jordan now, we have, out of the university, we have plenty of other, you know, centers that are doing like, you know, startups, companies. And so for this, there were students now, we are encouraging them to come up with their ideas, not to be shy about exposing the idea, no matter how it looks sometimes, you know, out of, we think really that we need out-of-doxx things. Now, innovation is the name of the game these days. You need to update everything you are doing. Like if you submit a report to your boss, you need to submit it the next day with some different ideas just to make him read it. So this culture now is being really transmitted to our young people. At the university, we have like 40 applications, 80 applications for new ideas every year submitted to the center. About 24 of them are incubated. The others go out and get some, you know, they are shopping for people to support them because these guys, they have ideas, but they don't have money mainly. I went this year to Berlin in innovation, you know, training, something like eight days of, and I saw how German, you know, Berlin is the hub of innovation, of science parks, everything. And you see how these guys are doing the thing. It is really an integrated effort where every step goes to some other, like for example, in Jordan now, we have many startups. When we reach the level of startup company that is registered, that is have an IP, something that I have to say, the challenge is again, you know, the procedure of IP and the legalization for this thing. But when you reach the startups, then people sometimes are lost because they go out to make their own company, and now they get into complication. They don't have money and things. What happens in Germany, I saw that every step leads to another step where you have this financing...
Corn shell, actually.
Yeah, financing companies that are working very well. They take just part of the IP, very small part, but they are... I saw projects there where they had the government paid like 75 million euro about 10 years back. And now they have about 2,800 companies, startups, fused in one science park, it's big science park. And I asked them how do they share money? And they told me that, well, they take, every company takes from that money its own, you know, and the left is sent to the government to support other, you know, startups elsewhere. So we think, we need to think about the future. And as you said, we are losing jobs. We are losing about 5 million or something like this jobs. But we are gaining many other jobs because now our entrepreneurs should create jobs for themselves and for the others. And I think that what we call unemployability is now the factor to check if you are doing good or bad with, you know... I think there is a lot to be done, but I think we are in the way. But we have really to worry about how fast, how things are moving very fast around us and how you can catch up.
The line, actually, the trend.
And these days, actually, there is no much difference between us and the Occident. As we have ideas, we have, you know, machines, we have everything. We have just to be, catch up fast, believe in ourselves, and think that we can really perform maybe, if not equal, even better, you know, because we are motivated for this.
Thank you, Professor. Let me turn to Dr. Hassan. Dr. Hassan, we heard from the previous session about the different competencies. And they were talking about critical thinking and problem solving. And they showed also the McKinsey Report, which shows that critical thinking problems are some of those skills that are needed. So in your opinion, what are, you know, some of those skills that are needed for our young innovators? Are those the only skills or there are more to be...
Thank you again for inviting me to this important and very successful event. And I would also say that regarding entrepreneurship and innovation, I don't think that one size fits all. I think different economies with different countries will matter in this case. For us in Qatar, as you know, it's a small country with a huge exporter of LNG and petrochemicals. I think the challenge for us is not to create entrepreneurs for SMEs, you know, for creating new jobs and to be innovator, which is an important part. But the other thing is how to manage the current assets, the public current assets, whether it is in the oil and gas industry or in the services or in the banking sector, on investments. All of these need to be led and carried out by the Qatari nationals, okay? And as you know, the national GDP for the Qatari, you know, economy is probably one of the highest, if not the highest, GDP. And this creates another challenge of how to provide the workplace with skilled graduates that can carry some attributes where Qataris can probably lead those organizations. So what we need to create here is first of all, we want our university, Qatar University, to be an entrepreneurial organization in the way that we deal with things. And in this regard, as you mentioned, whether it is at organizational level or at individual level, we think that, for example, in the graduate attributes, not only critical thinking, but also agility is important. As you mentioned here, with all of these advancements in Industrial Revolution, the Fourth Industrial Revolution, which will be a disturbing element for many way of things that we have to do so. So very important attribute or a skill is to be agile, to be resilient, okay? How we can be resilient in our way of looking at things or challenges so we can adapt and be fast reactors and at the same time exactly move ahead and to be creative in the way that we deal with our challenges? Because in fact, most of the academicians, whether, you know, or those reports as mentioned by McKinsey or others, they knew that this coming revolution will change the way and the behavior and the things that we live, our lifestyles. But how it will do this and how we as higher education be reactive for this and to meet these challenges, nobody yet coming to, you know, a definitive... So therefore, I think for us at Qatar University, we started what we call it a strategic transformation that comes of seven different strategies. One of them is strategy for entrepreneurship and innovation. And in this regard, we decided that we want first of all to identify the attributes for entrepreneurship and innovators to measure what is the level, the current level, and to set like a line for where we are and how to get there. And then to come up with initiatives.
Roadmap.
A roadmap, exactly. And we have identified several initiatives, but probably the time is not...
Yes, the time doesn't serve us. So thank you very much, Dr. Hassan. Dr. Ahmed, BDU supported Spark Labs in establishing Oman as a creative energy hub. Do you believe that companies within Oman should follow pursuit the same way? And will these mentorship kind of programs work and will have a success rate for startups in Oman? Your thoughts, please.
Well, thank you very much, first of all, and Salaam alaikum. Before answering your question, Abdullah, I'd like to just recap on one or two areas that have been touched on. First of all, I'd like to ask the audience question. Is there anyone in the hall that has not used his mobile phone for the past one hour? Raise your hand. No one? One? Oh, you change your mind. You have two mobile phones. So actually, why I'm asking this question? Because I was attending a session in Singapore. And in this session, the teacher, when he entered the classrooms, he told the students, please don't switch off your mobile phone. You will need them. And the whole teaching material, the whole curriculum was converted into mobile applications. So it's not just having a PDF file where the student could go through, but even the discussions in the classroom. Students answers to the discussion. They write them immediately. They are shown on the screen, and then they discuss them. And through that approach, they have not disengaged the students from something that they like. Because students, they like to use their mobile phones. So it's better that we encourage them to use it within our system. Making these students use the mobile phone in the classroom actually made it very difficult for them to respond to messages from friends, made it more difficult to go to websites, to read things that are not relevant to the classroom. So actually changing the mindset of the ecosystem in education, touching it at the strategic level, talking about integrating technology within the system. I attended a session similar to this. And during the session, I saw some of my colleagues using the mobile phones. And I was trying to hijack what they were doing. And I found that most of them, they do one of three or four things. One is responding to messages, friends or work. The other ones, they read about the speakers. So they go and search and read about the profiles of the speakers, which is a positive thing. And the third thing, some of them during the discussion, they find that there is a new topic, something they are not aware of. So they directly go to the net and they try to find some information, which is also, I think, positive. So this is very important that we integrate technology within the education system, not just online teaching and learning. The other thing I want to relate actually to what His Excellency, the Minister of Education in Bahrain, mentioned this morning, that in the transform they had, they closed College of Education, Kuliyat Muallimin, and they started a new, sorry, College of Education, Kuliyat Turbiya, and they started a new college, Kuliyat Muallimin. So I thought, why? Why couldn't they just go and change the curriculum and the management system within the old college? Because transformation takes a lot of time and sometimes results are not guaranteed. So it is better sometimes to take strong decision. So rather than changing the culture, they decided to close that college, find better job places for the existing staff, start a new institution with a new culture, a new management, that would make transformation much faster. Going back to your question now.
Yes.
Talking about...
We have a lot of time to do.
Yeah, I still have three minutes and 13 seconds.
All right.
Going back to your question now, relationship between academia and industry. This is a very important issue. And I think being Dean of College for several colleges over the past, I wouldn't say two decades, actually, but it is two decades. I have found that this is one of the challenges we are facing in Oman and I'm sure in many other countries. It's not working properly. The best we get in Oman from companies, from the industry, is on-job training. We send students before graduation. They attend two months of on-job training. But real collaboration is weak. Maybe there are two or three icon companies that have such strategies. So my proposal is this. We need in Oman, I think it's time now to establish some regulations. We need in Oman, I think it's time now to establish some regulations that makes it either compulsory to collaborate or compulsory for getting government projects, contracts. Like, for example, in Bideo, you have the ICV.
Yes.
The In-Country Value Initiative. Now, if within the in-country value, there are some points given to the companies that have links with the academia and that these initiatives within their links with academia are measurable, like how many training hours they have offered, how many of their staff they have delivered visiting sessions or classes, how many visit trips were arranged for students.
Dr. Ahmed, I agree with you that the ICV is an important part and it should be taken into consideration with all the organization within, you know, Oman. And thank you very much.
What I'm proposing, Abdullah, is that we need a regulation from the government to say, for example, when tender board announces tenders.
Yes.
There are criteria they base their decision on. So within these criteria, we need to introduce some points that would make their collaboration with academia taken into consideration before awarding the award.
I'm sure the decision makers are here and they can take that on board.
Thank you very much.
Let us give applause to our distinguished guests for their contribution. Now, today we will witness actually young, a number of young innovators showcasing their innovation. Let me call upon the stage the first young innovator, Idlal Sultanat Oman, Qaisi Tobi. Would you like to please join us on the stage? Hello, Salaam, Qaisi.
Hello, Salaam.
You have five minutes to present, and then we will take the next.
Assalamualaikum. Menasat Idlal, hea menasah elektronia, intalqat man Sultanat Oman ida watan al-araibi. Kula nina raf anat telem elektroni hua l mustaqbal. Astxadaam teknologia fiat telem, ah, bshkel ou bi achar, hua rahey kon l mustaqbal. Ah, tabanah fi menasat Idlal, haolna, ah, nagti kameel al-kuwaneb teknia, ah, w't teknologia laqay, laqadima, limojahtet tadiyat. Ah, menasah intalqat fi yanaer 2017, ah, b't tawon ma shereket Omantel, wa jamat al-usluq al-marh wal-mumteh fiat telem. An tariq mukaatag mara'ya, qasira, tarkaz ala al-maharat. Abtadnaan al-kanab teknia, l'tarkez ala al-maharat. Wal-maharat n'qad feeha, siwaan maharat teknia ou maharat shaxsya. Elmenasah shamaat kameel al-dowal arabiya. Ah, abtadat elmenasah fi awl yom min itlaqha, b'tskeel akthar man alfin, mustakam, khalaqar man a24 saha. Alaan bad santeen wanaf, belag aded al-mustakamien fi menasat Idlal, ilaa waadu 90 alf, ah, mustakam, men kafat al-dowal arabiya, w'ghir al-araabiya. Aded al-mawaziyah al-mutroha fi menasat Idlal, belag 60 mozhur, fi 8 majalat muhtalfa. Nisbet ar-raza' an al-muthwa al-mutroh, a24 faasal 7a man 5a. Aded al-dowal, akthar man a24 doula. Wa al-mustafidin minha, ah, hum, al-talba, wa al-mozafin, wa roadi al-aimal, wa khalik al-bahsin al-aimal. Halian tatofer al-mawaziyah fi muhtalaf majalat, minha al-ibtikar wa riyalet al-aimal, wa hua al-mozhur al-akthar talban, ah, al-mastwa al-dowal arabiya. Khalik, ah, mozhur al-maharat liadya, hua shaxsya, wa hua thani akthar mozhur talban, wa bakiya al-mawaziyah teknia. Min khalaqar menasat Idlal, a'tlqna, m'jumu'ah min al-mawaziyah li awl mara. Itim itlaqha fi al-watan al-araabi, ah, b'muthwa arabi. Ah, mawaziyah mesel, ah, al-block chain, al-mudun dhakya, wal-beyanat al-kubra, muhtalaf al-mawaziyah teknia lau'ra. Ah, tatoferat, ah, ala madar saha, t'xam, ah, kameel al-mustafidin. Ah, khalik, ah, fi al-ayam al-faat, ah, ha'celat menasat Idlal ala jaisa as-sul'tan qabus, l'igad fa'el xadama't elektronia. Wahad al-jaisa tumnha li awl mara, li mashru'g teknia ou mashru'g naash. Ah, hukbat al-jaisa fi sanoat al-sabqa, wa munha't fi al-ayam al-faat. Fat'charfa't menasat Idlal bil-husul ala hadal t'krim wal-jaisa. Al-jadir bil-thikr, ah, menasat Idlal qamet ala f'riq amal, shab, m'kou'yn min sabat ashqas, ah, min muhtalaf al-maharat, w't tekniat, w'al-khalfiyat. M'to'zat amar f'riq aqal man 25 saha. Ah, talba't jamat, ah, khalik, ah, m'txaxin fi al-kanab teknia wa m'txaxin fi al-kanab teknologia, ah, afon, al-fani, w't tso'yr il'akhre. Ah, f'kou'n hadal menasah, wahalian t'xam kameel al-dowal arabiya. Wa shukran alikum.
Thank you, Qais. Let's call Abjad Jordan Iman Ha'iluz.
Hello, everyone. My name is Iman Ha'iluz, and I'm the CEO and founder of Abjad, which is a combination of Kindle and Goodreads, but for the Arabic books. We are specialized in helping the lost readers to find a convenient and affordable access to the Arabic books and the unrecognized authors to reach to the publicity and the old-school publishers in the Arabic world to become scalable and updated with the new technologies. Only 3% of the content on the internet is actually in Arabic, while the Arabic-speaking users are the fourth largest in the world. With 222, 20 million Arabic-speaking users, three out of four are frequent book readers, while the 4,000 publishers and the 1 million books are all offline, with no reading discovery and zero reading insights for those users. In Abjad, we are bridging this gap. We are a social and digital reading platform with 1 million members. We have, we provide for the readers and the writers and the publishers a platform to get connected, where the readers, they get access to unlimited library of Arabic ebooks for $6 a month only for a monthly subscription. And the readers and the writers and the publishers, we actually digitize their content and enable them to publish on our platform. What the market offers today is six other Arabic ebook platforms, but they don't offer the subscription. But the biggest competition we have is actually the piracy on the books, where the Arabic books are scanned and provided as PDFs. But those are with no respect for the copyrights and are provided through untrusted websites. So while you are downloading those PDFs, you are actually downloading hundreds of viruses on your device because they're all untrusted and with no copyrights. We are targeting 20 million Arabic-speaking users, where 5 million are in the GCC market, 4 million in the US, and 3 million in Europe, and the rest are in the different countries in the Arab world. And we are targeting also the 4,000 publishers who are generating the 1 million Arabic books. We have integrated with 16 telecoms in the market for marketing and payment gateways with massive reach. We have signed contract with 60 of the top Arabic publishers and counting. We are on web, iOS, and Android, and we have built a localized e-reader for the Arabic language. 2018 has been an amazing year for us. Although we only turned our subscription in May 2017, yet we have reached to half a million monthly visitors, 3 million page views, half a million monthly book editions. And we generated 250K in annual revenues from a library that has 3,000 of the most amazing Arabic ebooks in the market. In 2022, our library will generate 50,000 of the Arabic ebooks, and we will reach to 3 million monthly active users, generating 5 million in annual revenue. In order to reach there, we plan to invest aggressively in the users and the ebook acquisition, where both would be supported by the ongoing support and investment of the product and technology on our web, iOS, and Android. And allow me, as a gift for the Mina Innovation, anyone who is interested and would like to get a subscription to Abjad to talk to me, because there is a special discount only for the Mina Innovation participants. Thank you.
Thank you, Iman. Please take a seat. Next is Al-Mushraf Elektroni, E-Mushraf, Sultanat Oman with Adnan Ashegli.
Assalamualaikum, warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. This presentation will be in English. This is Reem. Like most of the children in Oman, she went to school in a school bus. After the drop-off, she was left alone in the bus. In Oman, hot weather, a nine-years-old girl left alone on a school bus. Luckily, she was found later and rushed to a hospital. Reem survived. But other children were not as lucky as Reem and passed away. My name is Adnan Ashegli. I am the co-founder and CEO of E-Mushraf, and we turn ordinary school buses into smart buses to make sure that children like Reem are safe. In case of Reem, it took them more than 50 minutes to realize that Reem was missing. In E-Mushraf Smart Bus, Reem would be out in under three minutes. How is that possible? Because E-Mushraf combines sophisticated hardware installed on the buses and intelligent software used by schools and parents. There is four levels of safety checks. The first level of safety check, we mark all the attendance in the school bus. Students will be identified automatically every day they board the bus. The second level of safety, we ensure that the driver does a visual check after the drop-off by pushing a button at the back of the bus. The third level is motion detection inside the bus that would detect any child left behind. And the fourth level is a panic signal that can be triggered from inside the bus. In terms of software, the software is very valuable for both schools and parents. Schools can monitor all the buses and the passengers on each bus every day. For parents, they can track their children every day in real time. They get notifications, they can track the bus, they get the estimated time of arrival and other important notification. And this is all built by our team here in Oman, fully developed in-house, including hardware design and software development. So E-Mushraf today is serving more than 70 schools across Oman, and there is more than 500 smart buses on the streets today. And just last semester, we completed 1 million protected trips. And the biggest achievement is actually preventing actual incidents last semester. Three incidents, three lives were saved using our technology. E-Mushraf is also supported by a Raffid Fund, and we also received investments from Oman Technology Fund, from FaZe Ventures, Venture Capital in Oman, also Dividend Gate Capital from Bahrain and other angel investors. E-Mushraf is expanding, and the next implementation will be soon in Kuwait and Bahrain, Insha Allah, to serve and save lives in school buses. I would like to invite you, I would like to invite you to join us on this mission to make sure that school transportation is safe and smart. Thank you.
Thank you, Adnan. If you can, please take a seat. The next one will be Ajir Qatar with Haytham Al-Haidari.
Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikumsalam.
Assalamualaikum. And good afternoon. My name is Haytham Al-Haidari. Freelancing in general, especially remote work here in this region, is very scary to companies. For a reasonable amount, I understand why. But it's time to kind of disrupt that market with a reasonable startup that companies understand. Now, that problem, yeah, that actually creates a lot of problems. The first thing is our students in universities. No one goes to study civil engineering and then graduates a civil engineer. They're a Swiss knife right now. They graduate also knowing how to edit videos, watching all these YouTube videos. They know how to do photography. They probably program with a few languages. But there is no fit, right fit, especially in companies for full-time for these skills. They're never being utilized. The second thing is companies. Companies, when they have to outsource something, there are a lot of jobs that don't necessarily need the full-time position. I mean, a company doesn't need to hire a full-time person to post emojis on their social media full-time. But you need emojis in your social media to keep going with your brand, right? Or social media marketing. But then they end up outsourcing that to a, you know, big company paying a lot of money, which you don't need to do, really. And so we created Ajir. It's a disrupting business to find, for companies to find local freelancers to do a specific job for them and leave. And I'll show you how this actually worked in Qatar beautifully in the past less than a year. This works because of our value stream. Companies don't have to spend or go to an agency and spend a month or two to find people for specific jobs. With Ajir, they can post a job within two minutes and two days. They get like 40 applicants specifically for that job, whatever it is. Hiring them and paying them all goes very automated through Ajir and not dealing with HR headache or any of that. Data analysis. Let me ask you here. Let's see the community in Oman. If I ask you, what is the most outsourced skill in Oman right now? Does anybody know? Guesses? Data entry? Probably, I don't know. But what I know, and no one is going to even debate it in Qatar right now because of our data, is graphics design and social media content. Number one, people sometimes go, oh, probably web development, because there is a lot of startups coming up in Qatar now. But no, it's social content creation and graphic design. And that helps us with really understanding the market. And the last thing with our innovation is financial concern for companies. They can't usually pay for freelancers because they don't have invoices. They have the audit that needs to go with which company you went and what for and all of that. And with Ajir, they only deal with whoever they hire with one entity, and they just pay them that once a month, no headaches whatsoever. This is some of our success stories. We've been very lucky to actually now, with Qatar Foundation, we actually created a program with them in which we get these jobs from the market and make them exclusively to their students and alumni. We have a lot of jobs that we created for the Ministry of Telecommunication in Qatar, different departments, but they don't deal with any HR. At the end of the month, they paid to one entity, Ajir, online, boom, done. We automate everything process to the freelancers in the background. And we actually tested Ajir for the first time with Kareem, and it was a very interesting experience that pushed us to actually make Ajir a company. Obviously, the challenges are big with Ajir. The awareness, I mean, Ajir, it was very hard for us to find one word that means freelancer in Arabic. Took us a lot of time to actually come up with Ajir, which apparently is the word. Also for countries and governments to understand that, especially if there is a kafala system or sponsorship, to understand that there is a market that they need to monitor and use right now. And to companies to stop outsourcing to big companies, to other companies with a lot of money and use the same qualifications for less people and less projects. And the diverse talent usually in the region. Some countries and some places don't have enough talent for the people to be on Ajir, but that's what we're trying to build to empower people to be on Ajir with that talent. Right now, it's less than a year. We finished with 1,000 freelancers. And basically, this is our data. Most of them are university students and fresh graduates. And for the future, we hope to reach about 100 jobs a month be in the region, especially in the Gulf region, because I think it needs its most, and reach over 5,000 freelancers. And that was it. And our logo was designed by a freelancer, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Haytham. Thank you. Can you take a seat, please? I call upon the stage Wathq, Sultanat Oman, Fatma Al-Qassabi.
Assalamualaikum. Bwabat Wathq, l'telem w'taqwi'ma zati. Hea menasah tegli'ma elektronia, Umania. Tukdim m'jumu'ah min al-xadama't, khasa'at al-tulab al-hadi'ga'shar wa al-thani'ga'shar. L'al-mana'haq. Tukdim Mjumuha Menal Khadama, Chaka Lutlaab Al Hadi Gashar, Wal Thani Gashar, L'Manahik Lhukumia. Yastutiga Talib Al Hesul Al Haadii Khadama, Min Khalaal Mokwa Elektroni Chaks Bel Bawabat, E Wathq Dhatkum, Ou Min Khalaal Tatiq Wathq. Ahadafuna, Gmim Ma Yahaqeho Talib, L'Naghah, Watafouq, Yekon Fi Mekan Wa Haed. Kzalik Astglal Tekniyat Al Hadeefah, Fi Telem, Bhi Thayt Yekon Telemi Sahel, Wamthah, Fi Kli Mekan Wa Zaman. Wa Ayzan, Kdmet Almktamag, Tofir, Al Telem, Tofir Mbalag, Talila, La Auliya, Al Amur, Wal Asar. Bhi Thinnu La Auliya, Al Amur, Yedfagou, Mbalag, Talila, Talila, Tofir, Druus, Xuxushia, L'Talab. Kzalik Tofir, Mcdar, Wa Haed, Sahel, Wamthouq, Fi, Pithunna, L'Muhtaw, Telem, Elektroni, L'Qaimin, Ali, Huma, M'Almin, Menzaar, Tarrbiya, Wal Telem. Izan, Ho Mcdar, Wamthouq. Al Telem, Tqledi, Hee Ahad, Aham, La Asbab, Le Ti Dafatna, La Ibtikar, Kzalik, Tqleel, Nsa, Bel Resub, La Talaba, Wa Chasta, In, Moadi, L'Almia. Wa Ayzan, Listegan, B'msader, Ghir, Wamthouq, La Hesul, Al Maluma, Tahtalf, Min Talib, Il Aakhir, Bitali, Hada, Rahe, Yathr, Al Mstoyat, Him, Derasia. Wa Akhiran, Tqleel, Min Zahra, Druus, Xuxushia, Bitali, Iha, Nuwfar, La Talib, La Gohd, Wal Wakt, Wal Mal. Wa Badon, Tchaddiyat, La Yinken, Tachiq, Nmuu, Ai Mousse, La Yinken, Tachiq, Ahadafha, Wa Minzam, Tchaddiyat, La Ti, Waqhetna, Mithal, Ma, Zekna, Sabika. Iha, Al Fea, Mstahda, Chaks, Fi, Na, Huma, Talab, Hadi, Gashar, Wal Thani, Gashar. Izan, Minzam, Tchaddiyat, Ki, Mmink, Nacil, Il Al Madaris, Wa, Amal, Warshat, Tareifia, La Talab, Bhi Thayt, Iha, Ngaraf, Hm, La Bawabat, Ngaraf, Hm, Al Khadama. Ki, Mmink, Nqna, Ghal Talab, Astkhdam, Haadi, Tekniyat, Al Hadeefah, Fi, Telem. Kzalik, Taamul, Ma, Mshakil, Tekniya, Lyomia, La Talab. Wa Akhiran, Zuhur, Gada, Menafisin, Yukdemun, Khadama, Mmasila, Li, Ma, Tukdemu, La Bawabat. Ah, Taban, Tesa, Daiman, Mousse, Sa, La Taamul, Ma, Haadi, Tchaddiyat. Li, Ah, Yani, Ntaamul, Ma, Haadi, Tchaddiyat, Bhi Thayt, Taeyin, Ashax, Dwi, Khbar, Wadhu, Kfaa. La Siyam, Mubramjin, La Taamul, Ma, Mshakil, Tekniya. Ah, Kzalik, Tofir, Ou, Listegan, B'msawqin, Yasthakdmon, Turq, Mbtakra, L'Tsweq. Taban, Roietna, An, Teke, Bawabat, Wathq, Hee, La Iktiar, La Awa, La Talab, Fi, Kli, Baith. Ki, Mmink, Nhaqak, Haadi, Roiya, An, Tariq, Khadamatna. Bhi Thinnu, Teke, Khadamatna, Shamla, Wa, Muktemla, La Talab, Taeyin, Hm, Al Derasa. Wa Minzam, Khadamatna, Hee, Druus, Wathq, Telemiye. Hee, Gabara, An, Shroopat, Bil Vidiyo, Gamil, Shahr, Mubset, Lagmi, Druus, Mwudda, Fi, Al Kitab. Bhi Thayt, Sahel, Talib, Al, Ali, Al Mzaakra. Kzalik, Fi, Ha, Iktbarat, Elektroni, Ba, Imkana, Talib, Yektbar, Nasa, Online. Ah, Ma, Nataik, Foria, Wa, Tshih, La Igaba. Kzalik, Talib, Yhacel, Malaxat, Shroopat, Wa, Fi, Qism, Chas, Yekib, Al Asalat, Talab. Ai Talib, Gnde, Ai, Sual, Ou, Astfisar, Fi, Madde, Muyana, Ba, Imkana, Ytahr, Sualo. Wa, Iha, Gamil, Li, Kli, Madde, Mushraf, M'Almin, Yekib, Al Asalat, Talab. Haadi, Aham, Khadamatna, Li, Tukdam, Ha, La Bawabat. Taban, Min Khalaal, Ah, Saeyna, La Almal, Wa, Ttawir, Khadama, Nula, Huz, Nmuu, Fi, Gada, Mstafidin, Khalaal, Sanwaat, Mwazia. Wa, Nasga, Daiman, Il, Ttawir, Khadama, Fi, Sabil, Khadmet, Almktamag, Wal Telem. Taban, Akhiran, Ah, La, Ydhaqak, Ah, Nmuu, Ai, Mousse, Ah, Illa, Badham, Min, Almktamag, Aladi, Sua, Min, Lkihat, Lhukumia, Ou, Min, Lkihat, Chaks, Ah, Taban, Min, Ha, Minbar, Ha, Ben, An, Wajah, Klam, Shaker, Li, Kli, Daimin, Ah, L'Naghah, Ha, La, La, Mashruw, Ah, Fi, Khadmet, Al Telem, Kzalik, Almktamag, Wa, Nax, Bal, Zikr, Wa, Zaar, Tarrbiya, Wal Telem, Ah, Min, The Tarbawiin, Wal, Idariin, Ah, Kzalik, Klam, Shaker, Li, Ah, Ashab, Mentada, Ah, Menzam, In, Wal, Qaimin, Ali, La Itahat, Al Farsha, Lan. La Itahat, Al Farsha, Lan, La, Ghar, La, Tqrob, Na, Al Telemiye. Ha, Da, Wa, Salaam, Alaikum.
Thank you, Fatma. Thanks to all our young innovators for their presentation. Let's take one or two questions from the audience. Raise your hands and I guess the mic.
Hello. Thank you very much for very interesting innovations. It's a question to really all of you. I heard, I heard about Oman, I heard about Jordan and about Qatar, but only one of you said that his innovation is gonna be taken over to Kuwait and other parts of the Arab region. So my question to you as well, for the other four, is that also the same or not?
So to understand the question, sir, you're asking if we're targeting Kuwait as a market?
No, I'm asking if you're targeting the rest of the regions because I only, I only heard from the E Mushraf that it started in Oman, but they are in talks to expand it to Kuwait and other, Kuwait was one of the countries, yeah.
So I'm gonna answer based on my own startup at Saj Abjad. We have the benefit of being digital, so really we are expanding without having like, without the need for physical presence. We don't need warehouses, we don't need any, any kind of physical presence. What we need is actually to understand the culture of the country. And this is by visiting the country, understanding the culture by visiting the publishers, talking to the authors and the users, understanding where the users spend most of their digital time, online, on what's, on which social platforms, so we can target them afterwards. For example, we are based in Jordan, but our biggest market is not Jordan. It's actually in the GCC market, in Algeria, in Egypt, and in the US and Europe, the Arabic-speaking users who's living there. So this is the answer for me personally, but I'm sure for other startup, it would be different.
Let me turn to our panelist with you, Dr. Ahmed. Seems that you are eager to ask them. Please go ahead.
Actually, I wanted to ask company Ajir. Because your application focuses on freelancers. And I know that there are many other countries, many countries in the Arab states have recently released regulations for freelancers. In Saudi Arabia, it was released about one or two weeks ago. In Morocco, it was, I think, since 2005. So there are regulations, and with these regulations, then the client knows his rights and benefits. Because if I give a service to a translator through, let's say, a system, and this freelancer is not registered in any way, or if he takes the advance payment and then he doesn't complete the work or he doesn't complete it properly, are there any regulations either within your portal? Like, for example, ratings or any other regulations? Or also like returning the fee if the customer is not satisfied? And are there regulations in Qatar with regards to the freelancer services?
Right. So the first part, which is the regulations within the platform. Of course, we do have these regulations, and we have securities for both freelancers and companies, or insurance when, when they, when they're matched. In terms of Qatar, there are some regulations with the government, but the regulations were done before any platform has come to, you know, establish or challenge that problem. And so the regulations that they have are a bit slow. And then what happened is that we had to meet with the Ministry of Labor and negotiate and talk, how can we really move forward? And it was great because they wanted to find a solution of how do we get this moving forward faster. Through us now, we've established a list of things that we cannot post or companies can post for freelancer. Things that need licenses, you know, legal translation, legal services, engineering doctor. Things that need license cannot be on Ajir and shouldn't be on Ajir. Things that are, do not need licenses, as long as we have enough insurances and securities and our terms and conditions that protect both parties, then it should be fast enough for a company literally to post, get the person finished and payment within a week.
Thank you. Let's take one more question. Professor Rahasan.
Well, it's more of an observation than a question. All the presentations were excellent, but the word skills was mentioned several times by several of the presenters. And I think although technical skills and STEM skills are very important, what is essential are the soft skills, as attested by many studies and by many surveys. Because for graduates, you know, to be able to thrive and achieve in this rapidly changing world, they don't need to know rocket science, they need to know, in my opinion, social sciences and humanities. And these soft skills, communication skills, they're all presented very well. Management skills, leadership skills, critical thinking, analysis, synthesis, what's referred to as 21st century skills are essential. I mean, these graduates have to be not work-ready, they have to be world-ready. They have to be change agents, they have to be, you know, lifelong learners. And it's obvious that all of them have, unfortunately, if you look at the higher education system in our Mina region, more than ninety percent of universities do not facilitate, you know, this to their students. So I congratulate all of them.
Thank you, professor. I like the phrase "word ready, not work ready." Thank you. And thanks to our young innovator. A big applause to all of them. They can take down the stage. Let's call upon the next young innovator, Faylasuf Jordan with Mohammed Zahatra.
Hello, everyone. My name Mohammed Zahatra, founder and CEO of Faylasuf. We, in Faylasuf, solving a problem that properly, most of you facing it. So many Arabic books, if you are available. My story started in 2015, when I was looking for a book called Naqal Aklani Al Arabiya. The book analysis, the reason behind the Arab, behind the city, the Western civilization. And I tried to search about this book in the bookshop, in online bookshop, I didn't find it. Until the international book fair, I can't buy it from there. I started in 2015, with, in the first year, we sold less than five hundred books. And now, in 2019, we sold above six hundred thousand books. But we learned in those five years. In these five years, Mawdou in 2016 joined us, and we raised more than seven hundred thousand dollars for our venture. And after that, I see there are very, very lag in Arabic content. The Arabic content is become, because I am from five years to learn business and learn investment and how to fund trades. I go to learn how from the English books. Then we do our project. The big project is Wamba. Wamba, we are summarize and translate the best, most successful English books. The ten thousand successful, the ten thousand successful title in English, we summarize it, we summarizeation this books, and we translated, you can listen or read it in fifteen minutes. And Faylasuf, now, the one of the biggest online bookstores in the Middle East. We're offering more than nine million titles in our website from, from five hun, from more than five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand publishers in the region. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Would you like to take?
Yes.
So let me call upon the next speaker, TBD, to be done, I guess. Sultanate Oman, and the speaker is Muruj Sadi. Please, Muruj.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Muruj Sadi, and I'm here to tell you a story. On the fifteenth of June, 2017, that was when I graduated from Sultan Qabus University with a bachelor's degree after four years of battle. Before the graduation ceremony, I had already applied for six jobs. Little did I know was that at that time, I was competing with over twenty-two thousand Umani graduates, not including the graduates that have not been employed from years before. That's when frustration started, self-doubt, self, working with self-esteem that had got me to realize how this all had affected my mood, attitude, and personality, not only with myself, but with people around me. Well, according to the World Health Organization, GCC youth have identified career and academic factors as the second biggest sources of stress. Now, January 2018 was when I decided that it was enough for me with this frustration. Companies require me to have experience, but how am I supposed to get that experience if I wasn't able to land a job yet? Not only was I, was my goal to end this for myself, but for people around me and who are facing the same problem. That's when TBD, short for to be done, has come to life. We want to provide youth of Oman and around the region, not the first step that can give them an opportunity to upscale their skills prior to entering the job market. We do that through providing them with the means of placing them in part-time, short-term, and task-based opportunities. Not only giving youth an opportunity to upscale their skills and hands-on experience, but also create appealing portfolios that they can use in their job hunts. And also an extra source of money for them. At mytbd.me, we give companies access to short-term employees. This is done through a digital gateway. Now, we also give them an opportunity to get to these candidates, to bridge the gap that they can reach to a pool of talent, candidates who are vetted and well-assessed through our systems. Now, we are proud to say that we have been able to do this with a, with a team of three passionate young female founders. We have been able to raise one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to take this ambition into life. Not only that, but we are the only GCC founding team which has won Expo 2020 Dubai live competition. We have been able to secure forty contracts up to date. And I am standing here proud to tell you that we are officially launching our more robust product that takes TBD to the next level. Now, let me tell you something. You can actually go through our website right now, which is launched, and you can register with us. We don't only want partners from Oman entities and universities and colleges here, but also from the Mina region. Meet these two people. Mazn is an architectural student, who is our top, most returning candidate. And that's Hamil, a finance graduate, who has been working with TBD for six months. Is now working at Oman's biggest bank. I will leave you here with a quote from one of our candidates. "I was looking for a job to fulfill my free time, but found the community. So join us at mytbd.me." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Muruj, please have a seat. We'll take the next young innovator, Internet Ashiya, Li, Al Adfal, IoT for Kids, from Iraq, Reem Imad.
Okay, good morning. Sorry, good afternoon. I am very happy to be here now. I am Reem Imad from Iraq. I am IT programming, and I am talked about my presentation by Arab native language, so I am be free. Programa'na, Ho, Programa'j, Li, Hua, Internet, Ashiya. Mithal, Ma, La Huz, Annu, Iha, Muakhara, Sarat, Muwudhu, Kulish, sorry. Mithal, Ma, La Huz, Annu, Iha, Naa, Gnde, Surti, Li, Hua, Redusing, The Edition, For, Mobile Phone. In the one picture, Mithal, Ma, La Huz, Annu, Tarkiz, Al Adfal, Bi, Sura, Jada, Yani, Btariqa, Kulish, Mze'ja. So, Hada, Bitali, Da, Yathr, Btariqa, Jada, Mzra, Al Damagh, Hm, Li, Ayun, Hm. Fa, Iha, Da, Nha'ul, Qadr, Amkana, An, Hail, Mshthama, Sorry, Qadi, Mshtham, Aya, Ah, Li, Hee, Bi, Sura, Jada, Khati, Da, Yitba, Al Adfal, Astkhdam, Telephone, Bi, L'stkhdam, L'seed. Fa, Ha'ul, Na, Nukl, Min, Ha, Yisura, Il, Sura, Sani, Wo, Hee, La, Alm, Abdai, Min, Khalaal, Tahuil, Teknologi, Wastkhdam, Ha, Btariqa, Khati, Il, Tariqa, Sahiha. Min, Khali, Min, Khalaal, Tahuil, Mwahab, Al Adfal, Ah, Ttawir, Maharat, Hm, By, Skills, Min, Ashiya, Mbtakra, Wa, Amur, Muyana. Iha, Nha'ul, Ndar, Hm, Ngal, Hm, Al Asasiat, L'Barma, Ja, Wa, Al, Robotix, Wa, Al, Innovation. So, our products, Shuno, Menjat, Na, Ou, Shuno, Al, Qima, Li, Mmckin, Nibdi, Biha, Min, Khalaal, Adfan, Na, Wa, Nrab, Yitjil, Waad, Annu, Yekdar, Fad, Yechtar, Ashiya, Wa, Ybthkar, Mshari, Handas, Jada, Waad. So, On The First, Gnde, Innovation Program, Robotix Program, And, In The End, Il, Game Design Program. In The First, Innovation Program, Ah, Yiphto, Al, Jami, La Ibtikarat, Al, Jami, Al, Mshari, Al, Mmckin. Min, Khalaal, Ha, Kli, Al Adfal, Yha'ul, N'tkhaw, Hm, Al, Miam, Min, Btariqa, Mmilla, Il, Tariqa, Malmosa, Bal, Waqah. Bhi Thayt, Yekdar, Tufel, Ah, Ymidj, By, STEM, Li, Hua, Science, Of, Technology, Engineering, Art, And Math. Bhi Thayt, Yha'ul, Ah, Tjhabt, Min, Btariqa, Mmilla, Jada, Min, Al, Warq, Il, Tjhab, Al, Mia, Malmosa, Mmckin, Yshofha, Min, Khalaal, Waqah. bahaythi yihau'ul tijabta, min, b'tariqa mumilla jidda, min al-warq ilas tijabta al-miya malmosha, mukkun yishofha min khilaal waaqaa. In the second, robotics program, we have our IT programming, and n'darobham ala skills ma'ayana bi levels. Mukkun alimham khilaal graphical design, wa bi marahel m'taqadima, itkun bi Python and C++. Tamaan, marahel amriyam m'taqadima. A'ha'na n'darob min amar sab'ah sanwad li ghaya'ta xust'ah al-sana, and la'amar al-akbar. In the end, game design, li hu ra'hiyikun al-asa'siyat al-barmajya, li jidda mohma, li yitgalmham khilaalha, asasiat al-barmajya bi graphical design, wa kull al-asa'siyat, li mukkun, min khilaalha, yitwassoon b'tariqa al-afkar wa sana'at machareh haddasiya. Balashet al-fikra min sana't 2014, laha'zna, al-tatwar al-sari' al-sari' al-teknologi, wa antishar al-a'laat wa al-adawat al-cina'iyah. Ha'olna, n'wajl ha'da tawjih al-xata'ya al-teknologi, mithal ma zakkarna sab'aka, wa n'huwala ilal, ta'lim akshar mut'ga, li hu ta'lim al-ibdai, wa damjab al-gilum wa teknologi, wa al-m'chalefa min khilaal nizam STEM al-alam. Antisharuna ba'adha, ha'olna n'darob, balashna min mityan talib, ba'adha, tewassana bi m'ra'kez m'chalefa min al-Iraq, abtidaal min Baghdad, Markes, ba'adha, antisharuna ilal, karbala diwania, Nif, wa idzafa ilal, minatq akhara. Halian, a'ha'na bil-2019, m'darob imin 5,000 ilas 6,000 talib, wa insha'allah, na'tmo'hi ilal, tawwir al-jil, wa n'twassal ilal, arqam a'la min talak. My financial revenues and the future revenues, tamaan, a'ha'na khilaal sana' wa'ha'edna, adna t'drib saifi, li hu mayra'ah, min khilaal sana't a'shur, bi m'addal 60 sa'ah, kull talib, min khilaalha, yihassal ala certificate, m'sadq alayha al-alamian, dawlian, min qbal, sharaka Makeblock al-alam, al-ra'ide, wa saniya, al-alamian bi sana'at al-robotat. Fi sana't 2014, qadarna n'hassal ala wikal al-hassariya, min khilaalha, ha'olna n'sana'at al-STEM, xas bina, wa hassan'na ala m'sadq, min qbalha. Bi sana' wa'ha'edna, khilaal, faqat, Markes Baghdad, a'ha'na adna five cities, n'darob min khilaalha, al-afwaal, ala al-barmajya, mithal ma zakkarna, khilaal 60 sa'ah, lazim akku fadhad ma'ayn li ta'lim, ha'da, min khilaalha, yistati' al-tufel, annu yibtakor, yisana'at machareh, bi nafsah. In the end, my awesome team, li yitkwan min khilaal 40 ilas akshar, mohendis and IT, fa'hu'ra, kullish, bi tawjdi ma'ham, min sana't 2014 ilas ha'istana. Sha'ra, kull shari'kat, li yitgawna ma'ham, min zabinha sharaka Zain Iraq li ittisalat, li a'ha'na halian, with relation at partner, min khilaal IoT online courses, ha'da, nha'ul n'ghati akbar arqad min attalaba, annu a'ha'na mu'faqab, dorat itkun, markaziyah, idzafa ilal online, ha'da, yistati' akbar arqad min attalab, al-sharaka wa al-ibtikar. Shukran jazilan al-kum.
Shukran, Reem. Please take a seat. We are going to have our next young innovator, Inotech, from Sultanate of Oman, Uthman Al-Mandari. Fadhl, Uthman.
Salaam alaykum. My name is Uthman Al-Mandari. I am the founder and the CEO at Inobox. Today, I'll take you through the story behind our product, Inobox. Let me start by going back to the beginning, when myself and my co-founders were students at Sultan Qabus University. So back then, we used to deliver many volunteering work, teaching kids electronics, teaching programming for kids at schools. Unfortunately, we had to use many unsafe equipment, such as welding tools, cutting wires, high-power, high-voltage power supplies, which was completely dangerous for kids. So we started thinking of having something that considers safety. We went through the internet, we found many products covering this issue. But the problem is, none of them was covering the local needs of Umani students and Umani school students. So we decided to come with Inobox. So what is Inobox? Inobox is an educational toy for kids to teach them electronics and programming using custom-designed parts that are completely safe to use. Inobox has 18 components that are completely based on the Umani curriculum at schools. Within Inobox, instead of learning from the box, they will learn by applying and constructing real electronic circuits. Making a circuit is so easy for kids, they work by magnets. All they have to do is to follow the instructions, put the parts together, and then they construct the circuit in no time and completely safe. Inobox is not only about the hardware. We decided to be special, so we created our Android and iOS mobile game. With this game, which has 10 different levels, the kid can play 10 different challenges. And in every challenge, they will learn something new about electronics, starting with the basics, like the current, the voltage, the relationship between them, moving to resistance, diode, etc. Actually, when we launched this game, because the lack of the Arabic content in the Play Store and in the iOS Store, we were trending for two weeks as the number-one educational game in the Google Play, and the number-five in the App Store for about a month. Today, we have more than 10,000 downloads in both stores. We received more than 4.7 out of 5 average rating in both stores. Now, let's talk what is the next for Inobox. So our target before the end of this year, to deliver 1,000 units for 1,000 customers in Oman, Kuwait, and Emirates. By next year, we will start moving to new countries by having certificates and by having partnerships with international partners. If you wonder about the manufacturing process of Inobox. So in hardware startups, you start with an idea, then you move to a prototype. And the purpose of the prototype is to validate the idea and to see the response from customers. We had the first prototype that is 3D printed, then we moved into the second prototype after having the feedback from teachers and students. When we decided to go for mass production, which is producing a minimum of 1,000 units, we had to go to China, and we had to invest a lot of money. So we went to Oman Technology Fund, and we received $100,000 US dollars as a seed-stage investment. With this investment, we managed to manufacture 1,000 units. The whole assembly and the whole design is done in Oman locally here in Moscow. Yes, we do the plastic in China, we ship it to Oman, and then everything is done locally. Our team is 12 full-time Umani engineers and teachers, and we are growing, and by 2020, to be 15 full-time Umani engineers and teachers at Inotech. If you want to download our game, please visit our website, inoboxlearning.com. If you want to order Inobox, please visit our website. And thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much, Uthman. Please take a seat with your colleagues. Finally, we have one more young innovator, Sadiq from Jordan, Abdullah Audat.
Hello, everybody. I'm proud to be part of this event, and proud to see you all to look into my presentation. While major audience are speaking Arabic, so please allow me to switch to Arabic language. A'ha'na Abdullah Audat, mu'assas startup, isma Sadiq, min the Urden. A'ha'na, me li fi'zlih, kuli'at, wa gan thwora cina'yi rab'ga, wa gan thahu'il elektronik. A'ha'na liyom, am, am n'hamal, li hu, n'alim, machin's, inha, kif tifham alayna, gashan, tso'at taskat akhtar, wa nha'ul n'hamal, li hu, n'ha'ul, n'wa'ib tattur, bi digital transformation. Liyom, sharaka Sadiq, a'ha'na, am, benhail, mushkilay, kiti' kibira, la'sharaka, la'jamaat, wa la'kull nas, li bihimha, komunikation, wa tawasal ma'hanas. Liyom, ma'had, bi'xta'f, annu 90% min nas, m'jodien, am, movin, kuli'at, wa ala social media. Ha'da, kulli komunikation, sar, kaman, WhatsApp. Kulli komunikation sar, min, call center, min, emailat, min, ashya'ha, kulli, tassarat, ala social media. Wa liyom, kaman, bin nisba' la'jamaat, kiti' min attalab, bi'kun, fi' groups, ala social media, la'kull class, am, bi'axduha, gashan, siri, fi' discussion, wa alamur, ha'kuli'at, ha'kuli'at, xar'j, al-ittarat rasmia. Wa kulli nas, li bi'khu, wa bi'salhu, wa bi'siri, kulli activity, ha'ay, ala social media, bi'stannu response, la'kull, min shari'kat, li bi'hamal complaints, alayha, or questions, khilaal, takri'ban, 60 minute. Fa'man hoon, a'ha'na, lagina mushkilay, adna, kiti' min shari'kat, annu, bi'wajho, mushakal, b'tawasal ma'hamalat ham, min khilaal social media. Lannu, fi' akhtar min platform, fi' Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn, and wa ha'da, la'ishii, gashan, n'radu alayha, wa gashan, yifeltroha, bi'hamal, antum, time consumption, consumption, lannu, fi' kiti' filters, wa fi' kiti' comments, wa messages, from different places. Wa kaman, ma'fi availability, wa da, ma'fi delay response, related to, annu, ala jidda volume, li bi'ji'ham, ala jidda rasa'el, wa messages, li b'tu'sal ham, bifatrat ma'ayn. Wa ha'da, la'ishii, kaman, bi'wajh la'jamaat, li hu, faterat t'sejil, qubul, t'sejil. La'ma, shaxs, wa talib, ma bi'xtra' al-moqag la'jamaat, wa li bi'shuv, safhahat, wa li bi'hamal, la'ishii. Bu'dha'ul, ala peech, al-Facebook, wa bi'salhu ham, ma'ta bi'ftha' t'sejil, antko, ma'ta bi'sakka' t'sejil, antko. Kif, da, yidde'm, ala, t'xassus ma'ayn, shu, l'mtutallabat? Fa'man hoon, a'ha'na, b'takkarna, manas' elektroniyah, t'qadar, t'shbet, kulli social accounts, la'jamaat, wa la' shirkay, wa la, la, xan'ik, la'kan, fa'tqadar, t'shbet, kulli social accounts, ba'dha'ik, t'qadar, t'hu't, artificial intelligence rule, that can, xan'ik, t'qadar, t'garf, ha'da, su'al, min ay related, min ay jaha, min ay, bin zat'at, esh, 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 t'bi'at mowdhu'g, wa yirad alayha, automatikli, la'informative, xan'ik, information. Wa da, ai'ishii, fi', xan'ik, more details, n'qadar, n'xali, the personal, xan'ik, mo'zaf, nafse, wa li yirad alayha. Lannu, kiti' fi', asle, da, ma'tu'sal, nafse, ha, li hu, nafse, annu, ma'ta bi'ba't t'sejil, ma'ta bi'xlas, kif, da, yidde'm, ha'ay, ha'ay, kurs, fatth, wa li la, ha'ay, ashya, ma'ba'tha, yani, emailat, tab'ah, al-qubul, t'sejil, bi'kun, takri'ban, mitye, email, kuli'at, wa ala, la'ishii. Wa da, b'da, yirad alayha, kuli'at, wa treta' a'ra' sa'at, bas, a'ha'na, yirad, kobe, base, kobe, base, kobe, base. Fa, ha'ay, la'ishii, a'ha'na, tawrna machin, gashan, tifham, ha'ay, informative, information, wa t'ha'ul, t'hamal, matching, ma'la' question. Fa'a'ha'na, adna machin, t'qadar, tifham, la'sale, wa t'jawab alayha, m'ba'shara, wa kaman, t'jawab alayha, b'akhtar, min tariqa, gashan, ma'ybin, annu, kaman, robotik, li, am, bi'rad. Min khilaal ha'da, la'ishii, a'ha'na, adna availability 24/7, automation, saving the time, wa fi' adna, kaman, li hu, integration. Integration bihim, kiti' la'jamaat, kum, a'ha'na, by MENA Education, b'da, haki' la'jamaat, kif, a'ha'na, bi'fid. A'ha'na, kiti' fi', nas, m'ra't, bi'salhu, gan kutb ma'ayna, al-social media, mukkun, yidhul, al-masijat, wa bi'hki, ha'li kitab, ha'da, m'jod, esh, ma'ayn, antko, mithal, m'jod, ha'da, bi'ma'ktabe, fa'mba'shara, bi'ji' al auto-response, annu, ha'li kitab, m'zbu't, m'jod, adna, bi'rf, la'kada, bi'tabq, la'kada, bi'tabq, la'kada. Lannu, a'ha'na, already, am, kon, ghamlin, integration, ma'la's system, tab'ah, m'ktaba, wa a'ha'na, men'hamal, lebridge, li ma'bin, system, m'ktaba, wa ma'bin, social media. Fa'ma'fi, da'at, t'hamalu, ai'ishii, bas, connect, la-social media, la-platform, tab'ahna, m'ba'shara, bu'hlhu, bi'tra' kutb, wa bi'jawab, al-social media. Ba'na, lo, ba'dhu, bi'ba't email, m'kun, n'qad, treta' a'ra' iya'm, la, ha'da, yirad alayha, m'kun, ma'had, yirad alayha, aslan. Fa, khilaal sana't 2018, qadarna, n'jib, jazat, afzal, sharaka, arabia, na'sha, bi Arabnet Competition. Kanta, bi Dubai, bin nafsa, min, akhtar, min, saba'ah, wa sab'ah, wa, wa akhtar, min majal. Wa bi-2018, kaman, a'xna, jazat, Malik Rani, la'ryade, wa a'xna, jazat, sharaka, Zain, la'shari'kat, na'sha. Wa kaman, sharaka, Facebook, ya'qgu, ma'na, shara'at, strategiyah, lannu, a'ha'na, bin tawr, majal, artificial intelligence, wa especially, in Arabic, to recognize the intents and the question, and find matched answers. Ha'ay, ba'ad, bas, min, jowais, li hu, adna, ha'ul, press coverage, wa press coverage, li kan, khilaal, sana' wa'ha'edna. Wa akher, la'ishii, qaba'ma, a'xtem, kaman, sana' wa'ha'edna, kuna, bi'jamaat Harvard, bi competition, am, n'shtal, ma'ha' daktor, hna, gashan, n'tawr, kaman, artificial intelligence engine, li m'jod, adna. Bas, liyom, a'ha'ra'j, bi'partner, m'jodien, bi, bi, hazzreen, bi'muktamar, fa'alki't, jamaat Cambridge, m'jodien. Fa'a'na, min zaman, daman, tmo'hi, a'drus, bi'jamaat Cambridge, bas, insha'allah, insha'allah, al-him, yani, b'sir, haqiqah, later on, wa b'nqadar, to attend, jamaat Cambridge, wa, wa shukran al-kum, ya'ha'd, bi'ha'd, bi'tu, wa'sal, ha'ay, email, wa yagti' al-khalaf, gafiyat.
Shukran jazilan. Abdullah, please take a seat. Okay, thank you very much for the young innovators, for their presentations. Let's take now question. I will start with actually our panelists. Dr. Hassan, you would like to start first?
In fact, I have also a comment rather than a question.
Go ahead.
In fact, I feel very proud to see these youngsters, and youth, in the Arab world, and that they, they would like, and they want to create a difference in their communities. So this is something that we should all be proud of. In fact, I just want to, you know, to mention that for such innovative ideas, things need to be evaluated, from my perspective, from two dimensions. First of all, is how impactful is this idea in its community, in its society? And the value creation that this idea will make into, by itself, or, or, or the other, that could also benefit out of it. So, and usually, this is done through, you know, whether you are creating a platform or an application. In a platform, it means that you are creating a community or a tool that will lead to many other applications, that so many others can, can, can do. Similar to, for example, the iPhone, when it was created, and the Apple Store, and many other applications came out of this, or Google, or whatever. And in terms of value creation also, we need to understand that not only how the net profit will be, the final figure of net profit. We are talking here about, you know, how things will evolve in the future. Because you are dealing here probably with data, with so many other things that could be also utilized in many other applications. We know that, for example, Twitter, although it's been become listed, is not, you know, being profitable so far, although we see that, you know, how impactful it made. But the value creation of such thing is something that we all, exactly.
How to measure the value, not only financial, but in terms of its impact. Let me move to Professor Mohammed. Would you like to comment or ask the young innovators anything?
Yes. Actually, I enjoyed the two panels, the two, you know, competitors. And I have really intriguing question, because I supervise some of the students in the innovation. And I would like to ask, because it looks like the 10, one of the 10 projects we have seen are successful. And they have happy endings, as we see, because we see that they are above, after the startups, and they are talking about real product, and product that have share, and people are using it. My question is, what is the second challenge those guys felt, every one of them? After the finance, you know, the, the, the stage one, the number one, you know, problem, I think, is financing. I want to avoid this, because now, we are trying to support guys with money. But what is the second challenge, that everyone has, maybe, you know?
Young innovators, please.
Hello. The second challenge that we are facing, I think, after the finance, like, we closed the financial, around 500,000 dollar, in the first, in the beginning of this year. The challenge is to hiring talent that work with you, and they have, they have the passion to make this journey successful. And because the education system is not, after graduated from the education system, there are a very, very bad, very big lag between the education and what is the practice and the need of the work. Like, you need to start with, graduated from the zero, to learn him, how to communicate with your colleague, how you communicate in the email, there are very big lag. And to hiring talent, I think, it's, it's need, the universities and college, it's working in to make talents for startups.
Good.
Would you label this as making a team?
No.
Making your team to?
I think, I think what he means is that the second challenge is the talent acquisition. To make sure that you get someone who's actually talented. I don't think we have a question, a time, John. Do we have a time for the audience, or we close it here?
Well, I must say, sorry, we're trying to get so much in at a short time, and thank you for our young innovators. I'll use this opportunity, I do apologize, just to do a little bit of housekeeping, because we do, we are tired on time for lunch. Please don't leave any personal belongings here, because this converts to meeting tables. And I kindly ask everybody's back here by 3 o'clock for the meetings. We were missing a few yesterday, and some important meetings this afternoon. So that's my first point. Right, on this, the young innovators, firstly, let's give every one of them a big round of applause. Thank you very much. Okay, you can see on your screens, go to your device, go to your browser on your device. I know a few people have started voting already. Go to slido.com. It's just a bit of fun, okay? And you enter the event code, MENA2019. I say it's a bit of fun, but business is competitive, so it's a bit of a flavor to get things going. And just for your information, the, ourselves as organizers...